Good evening, I'm Brandy Quantz with the City Attorney's Office. I'll call the regular City Council meeting of Monday, March 6, 2023 to order at 7:00 PM. If we could have roll call, please.
Alderman Santi?
Here.
Alderman Glad?
Here.
Alderman Claskey?
Here.
Alderman Harding?
Here.
Alderman Strach?
Here.
Alderman Miller?
Here. And if I could have a motion to name Councilmember Andy Glab as Mayor Pro Tem for this March 6th meeting. So moved in a second.
I will second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
abstain.
Alderman Claskey?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Strach?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
All right, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which I stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first point of business is going to be a proclamation recognizing Chris Moore, a Class 3A Individual Wrestling State Champion, and proclaiming the week of March 6, 2023, as Chris Moore State Champion Week. From what I gather, he's got, what, a 40-0 record? I think it was just...
Forty-three, I think.
Forty-three and oh?
I think so.
Just outstanding. It's a great representation of the City of McHenry. So I will take and have our Administrator Derrick Moorefield present the award from the City and the proclamation.
What Chris doesn't know is it's about three out of five in order for him to take this home. I actually asked, if I could read this tonight, Mayor Jett wasn't able to be here, and I asked Mayor Pro Tem Glad, Mayor Pro Tem Glad, as a former wrestler, I thought it was important for me, I've never been able to introduce a state champion before, and before I read the proclamation, people I don't think understand that if not wrestled, if done in sort of one-on-one grappling sport, how grueling it can be. And, you know, not only you're putting, when you step on the mat, it's just you, and we have a saying that this mat doesn't lie, the wrestling mat or the jiu-jitsu mat or whatever it is doesn't lie. When you step out there, there's nobody else to blame. It's you and the person you're going up against, your coach isn't out there, your teammates aren't out there, sure you have the referee, but it's your skills against the other person's skills. And to be successful, to step out there, first of all, is a huge accomplishment. To have a winning record is even, even greater accomplishment, but to go undefeated over an entire season, can be a state champion, the best at that weight class than anyone else in the state of Illinois, is just amazing. And it's a forty-three and oh record, right?
Yeah.
And I just know, and we know, that you're going to go to the University of Illinois, you're going to represent yourself and your family, the City of McHenry, McHenry High School, and you're just going to be successful down there, and it's going to carry you on through your entire life. I mean, that's what we learn as wrestlers, that's the challenge. So I'm happy to be able to read this proclamation for you tonight, and you actually get to take this, we don't have to actually rattle.
Derrick, could you guys come up here a little bit?
Sure.
That way the people that are online can hear everything that you have to say with the proclamation.
Yep, thank you. Whereas Chris Moore represented McHenry High School at the IHSA Individual Wrestling State Tournament, and whereas Chris Moore won the Class 3A 170-pound state title, and whereas Chris Moore finished the season with a forty-three and oh record, and whereas Chris Moore will advance his academic and athletic career at the University of Illinois, now therefore, I Derrick Moorefield, on behalf of Wayne Jett, Mayor of McHenry, do hereby proclaim the week of March 6, 2023, as Chris Moore State Champion Week in the City of McHenry. I urge all citizens to recognize and extend their admiration to Chris Moore for his accomplishments and representing his city and his school. Furthermore, a copy of this proclamation shall be presented to Chris Moore to be displayed in a prominent place in recognition of his efforts, passed and approved the sixth day of March 2023. Signed, Wayne Jett, Mayor. Congratulations. We were going to roll out a mat for demonstrations, but we couldn't find one fast enough.
Could I say something?
Next on our agenda is public comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to say how proud I am, Chris. You represent McHenry well as a former wrestler. I know it's hard to do, and for you to go undefeated the whole year and win the state championship, thank you. I couldn't be more excited if cocaine bear walked through that door right now. So thank you so much.
Okay, again, our next is public comment, and we have one person to sign in, Carl Kaminski, a County Board Representative. Carl, would you turn on your mic, please?
There we go. Good evening, my name is Carl Kaminski, I'm from Johnsburg, been around the area for over forty-three some odd years. Newly elected on the County Board, and I'm making it to all the municipalities within my district, and I will continue to be showing up at your board meetings from time to time as time permits. At the county, we don't have a whole lot that we will deal with at the municipality, because you guys write your own rules and do your own thing. With that said, the county does have a lot of support for you guys at the municipalities, such as our Valley High. You may have seniors that, you know, need to go out there. What we do for ordinance is you guys take a look at, and we have to get it right the first time, and typically you model, you know, your rules after what we do at the county. Transportation, there's overlapping, you know, with what we do at the county for transportation, planning and development, law and government. So granted, we don't have a say in your day-to-day, but we do work closely together. And I'm offering that if you have questions, please reach out. If I don't know the answer, I know I have a staff behind me that are experts in it and will get it done. You can even ask your attorney, she'll tell you how smart they are out there. But I just wanted to take a second and introduce myself, and if you do, please, just give me a call, I'll be more than happy to help you out. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, does anybody wish to pull anything? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Alderman McClaskey?
Yes, if there's nothing to be pulled, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
And a second by Alderman Santi?
I will second the motion.
Okay. Roll call?
Alderman Claskey?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Strach?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Okay, the next thing we're going to go to is our individual action item agenda, which the first thing is a revocable license agreement with 1252 Green LLC. It's a motion to approve ordinance authorizing execution of a revocable license agreement between the City of McHenry and 1252 Green LLC for improvement and to the use of a portion of Newman Park. Community Development Director Palarecki, could you explain further, please?
Thank you. So before you tonight is a request for a revocable license agreement similar to the D.C. Cobb's Agreement and the one that was on this property prior to these new owners purchasing the property late last fall. They're asking for the use of the park, and they're also asking for improvements to the park that, per the schedule that you see in the packet. Again, this is very similar to what was done with the previous owner of this building. That one was non-transferable, so therefore we need to do another agreement. The petitioners are here in the audience tonight. If there's any questions, and I'm also here as well.
I'd entertain any questions by any of the Aldermen? Alderperson? Alderman Santi?
Two questions. Do we, do we know what, how many square feet the banquet hall is going to be in the back? Any idea yet? Any idea?
I, I do not know the answer to that question yet. We haven't, we have not gotten to building plans yet.
Okay.
For portion of it, so they're still working that out.
All right. And the way this reads, to make sure I understand it, is that when I see the drawings, you know, on our, on our documents tonight, the area outside that's going to be closer to the street on the west side will be the more of the open atmosphere, coffee only, no alcoholic beverages, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the area then going to the east side will be the more of the gated and actually coming off of, I think that second entrance is, exit entrance is like a more into the, into the banquet area?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
If nobody else has any comments, the thing I would ask is, and it's a hypothetical question, but if this wasn't approved and they would have to, who is it that would be liable to take down the patio that they have in front on the sidewalk?
Well, under the old license agreement, that would have been up to the, the building owner prior to the new building owners.
Okay, so where do we stand as far as, we get no, no bond money or anything else for this?
Well, in the agreement, anytime that we would have to remove something, it's outlined in the agreement how that plays out, and then the, the building owners would be responsible for the cost plus any fees associated with it.
Okay, but if they've sold the property, then who, who do we go after? The new property owner or the old property owner?
I mean, we would, I mean, I hope that if, if anything played out, which I hope doesn't happen in that nature, that we would be able to lean that property before it's sold. And then we would recoup those costs at the sale of the property.
Yeah, but I mean, like, let's say in this case, what if whoever had purchased the property, had decided to, let's say, change the use and we decided we didn't want the patio out there, where would we be? Because we couldn't go back at the old property owners or what? There's no way to lean the property now to somebody new, is it?
Right, but I think we made that choice when we entered into that agreement, that we were okay with that front patio being there. I mean, it, it actually needed to happen to gain accessibility into the building, and we have other areas along Green Street where that comes into play. I mean, it's not, it's not encroaching but maybe nine or 10 inches into the city right away, and we did that encroachment agreement with them. That was to get the width required by ADA accessibility and also the ADA accessibility into the building where they could build the ramp.
Again, everything's going to be pretty much the same of what it was except for the accessibility that Alderman Santi brought up as far as the drinking area outside of the, the deck building, whatever, that built out on the park, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I've got. Anybody else, Alderman Santi?
Yeah, I, I should have followed up on my second question, but that area to the east will be an area that there, there will be allowed alcoholic beverages and it will be fenced in, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
There are no more questions, I would entertain a vote? Roll call? Oh, Alderman Santi, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a, a motion, I don't think there's a motion.
Oh, that's right, we don't have a motion yet, okay.
I will, but yes, I will make the motion to approve 7A licensing agreement with 1252 Green Street LLC as presented.
Okay, could we have a second from Alderman Harding?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Then roll call.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Strach?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman McClaskey?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes. Okay, we have a, the residents at Fox Meadow...
No, another, B is next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, you moved it up, all right. Revocable right-of-way encroachment agreement with Riverside LLC. It's a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the execution of a revocable right-of-way agreement between the City of McHenry and Riverside One LLC for the use of the public right-of-way sidewalk at 1401 Riverside Drive. And again, I will ask Director Palarecki to continue on this.
Thank you again. So here's a second one for the evening. So going back, when, when the owners of the property purchased the property, their original intent was to tear the building down and start from fresh. The Landmark Commission and Historic Society got involved with that, met with the owners of the property and asked them if they could somehow rehabilitate the existing property known as, it was the original courthouse for Lake and McHenry Counties. The owners were unaware of that and decided at that point, hey, you know, let's work with the Landmark Commission and the, and the Historic Society and get something done here and make this thing look like it used to. So they chose the elevations of what was known as the J.C. Bickler House. The J.C. Bickler House has a big wraparound porch on it. In order to make that come to fruition, as we moved through the processes, we realized that the width of that porch was going to have to encroach on, on the city right-of-way. So working with the owners, they agreed that they would enter into revocable license agreement with the City of McHenry to encroach on the right-of-way on Riverside Drive and on Pearl Street. Through the processes, we did make it less non-conforming than it was prior to, prior to when it was the town club, the encroachments were more. So we scaled it back a little bit, I think they're about a foot on Pearl Street and then about two, two feet, four inches maybe on, on Riverside Drive. At no point will that ever become the side, where the sidewalks don't meet the handicap accessibility that's required. So I'm asking for, council entertain this revocable license agreement tonight. Petitioner is in the office, or in the audience as well.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion. Alderman McClaskey?
Yes, I would move that we approve the revocable right-of-way encroachment for Riverside LLC.
And a second by Alderwoman Miller?
I'll second that motion.
Alderwoman Miller?
I love the porch. I think it's, I think it just really does reflect the historical nature of the building, and it just dresses that corner up. So I love the renderings, I hope the actual porch looks as great as the renderings projected to be.
As an Alderman, I will take and make a comment, and in fact, I wanted to say kudos to the developer, the fact that he worked with the city on this as well as the city working with him to make this project work. If you had went out there at the beginning, it was pretty hairy looking at a couple different times, but it's really going to be something, I think, as a showpiece for that area, and again, thanks to the developer. There are no other comments, I will ask for a roll call.
Alderman McClaskey?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Strach?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Okay, we move on to the residents at Fox Meadows' approval. It's a motion to approve an ordinance granting final plat, plan and plat of subdivision approval and vacating public right-of-way for the residences at Fox Meadows Planned Unit Development, located at the northeast corner of Illinois 31 and Veterans Parkway, and an ordinance authorizing the mayor's execution of a development agreement with Coonat Incorporated for the residences at Fox Meadow Multi-Family Development. And again, we will direct it to Director Palarecki.
Thank you again.
Number three.
Right, this is it. So I think we're all familiar with the Fox Meadows development by this point. It has gone through, I think it went through four plan and zoning hearings, and then it got preliminary approval here at the City Council level. So this is the final, the final approval that they're looking to receive this evening. Again, it's 540 units located at the corner of South Illinois Route 31 and Veterans Parkway. The, tonight's ordinance will vacate a platted road that is within that subdivision, and then also approve the PUD ordinance, and we enter into the development agreement with the petitioner. You guys all had a packet, which was a copy of the development agreement at your, at your desks tonight. You'll see whether it's redlined, there was a minor change in that today, so when we go ahead and adopt this, we want to make sure we adopt the revised agreement that's before you.
I believe that agreement, as far as the changes, is just more structural than changing actually the agreements themselves.
Correct, correct.
Right.
So Kara Coonant and Stephanie Spitzen are here tonight if there's any questions from the council.
If nobody else has anything to say, I want to say that I voted against this originally because of the fact of the traffic light, my concerns of traffic over there, they still have concerns of traffic. However, it did go through the council, and this is just another now phase as far as that it's properly planned and everything else, and I don't see a problem with it, so I will be voting yes on this. Alderman Santi?
No, I'll just, I'll just follow up, Alderman Glad, that. I mean, I, I did vote for it originally, and I will continue to look forward to this, this starting to be, to, to get built. I guess, I mean, it's right here, you know, that IDOT traffic warrants, you know, it, it has not met that level, so, you know, that's where you're sitting, we're, you know, in a rock and a hard place with, with IDOT. At some point, you know, hopefully that will change, but to this point, it'll, you know, it'll go as we originally voted on it. Thank you.
I will make one more comment on that, as long as we have a County Board member here that may, might hear this, and maybe he will take up the, the cross or however you want to say it. Basically, the comment I'm going to make is the fact that you take a look at the warrants that the state of Illinois asks for as far as roadways on traffic lights, sometimes even stop signs, and the criteria in some cases, it's deploring that sometimes a death means that they need a, a traffic light, and I think they need to revamp their, you know, let's, let's, let's be proactive and not reactive as far as a state. Let's take and let's look at these situations to where, in a lot of cases, that we need the traffic light because we know it's coming. And if we can make a big enough case for that, then maybe, maybe at that point in time is when a traffic light should come up and not when there's a travesty or everything's just so bogged down. And I think, I think the criteria needs to be changed at the state level. Yes, Alderman Strach, could I?
Just a quick question for Ross. Item E that was struck in the agreement for the bike path? Along Veterans Parkway?
Yeah.
Are we, are we replacing that with something, or what is happening in that realm?
No, it's just worded differently. So the off-site improvements that are referenced in the exhibit do include the bike path as well.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I, I thought it was just moved, but I wanted to be sure that that was actually, still remaining, just moved into the reference.
So we will obtain letters of credit for those off-site improvements. Once, once those improvements are made, they'll go to a maintenance period and then, you know, but we'll have the letter of credit just to ensure that those get done.
Perfect. Just wanted to verify, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, if there are no other comments, can we take a roll call? Oh, I'm sorry, we still don't have a motion, okay? Do we have a motion? Okay, Alderwoman Miller?
I'll make the motion to approve an ordinance granting final plan and plat of subdivision approval and vacating of a public right-of-way for the residences at Fox Meadows Planned Unit Development, located on northeast corner of Illinois 31 and Veterans Parkway, and an ordinance authorizing the mayor's execution of a development agreement with the Coonat Inc. for the residences at Fox Valley Multi-Family Development as revised today.
Okay, I'll direct this to our City Attorney. Do we need two separate motions and two separate votes, or as long as nobody has a problem with the, the whole thing as one, we can take a vote on it, but Alderman McClaskey?
I'll second that.
You second it, okay. Then any comments from anybody? Okay, the only thing I want to mention is, is as far as the agreement, that we're reducing the impact fees of the water, but that's to what Authentix was, and having a discussion with Director Palarecki down in the future, we're going to be looking at changing the ordinance as such anyway. And there is enough criteria to show, you know, I'm a stickler for giving up money, and he convinced me, so. With that, anybody else comment? Then if we could take a roll call.
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Strach?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Strach?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Okay, number eight on our agenda, discussion item agenda, this, I'm sorry?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight, nobody has anything, okay. Then we're looking at staff reports, which are already...
Yeah, I got something for you, I have a gift for everybody tonight, and you start passing it on Ross to sit here. This is information for next council meeting, it's budget time.
Derrick.
I know, I know how much everyone's looking forward to my presentation on the budget every year, so this is the, I always try to provide it, or we try to provide it to you two weeks ahead of time to be able to review, so basically it's a, it's a summary memo from Carolyn, a 25-page summary memo, but a summary memo from Carolyn and I, and then a presentation, a copy of my PowerPoint presentation that I'll be giving on the 21st, I'm sorry, the 20th of March. So if you have any questions beforehand, feel free to reach out, otherwise this will be what we're covering on the, on the 20th. And staff reports, as provided at the first meeting of every month, those were included in your council packet, and also emailed to council members for your use also. Thank you.
Do we have a direct line to Carolyn?
Sure.
We all need it. Any other staff reports that, for tonight? If not, then City Council, well, Mayor's report, he's having a great time out, having a vacation, and everybody deserves one once in a while to get away from everything, so I hope he's having fun out there. I don't think the, the weather out there reports seem like they were quite favorable. So anyway, with that, we'll go to the City Council comments. Alderman Santi?
This one is kind of a little, little bit of a touchy one, emotional one, but I wanted to just say, we lost a wonderful man by the name Edward Bus last week, and his wake was yesterday, the mass was today for him. You just, you, I'd spend an hour just trying to explain everything that, my knowledge of him and what he's done for, for myself and my family, but, you know, ran, ran Bus Ford, and actually, I didn't realize this until about two weeks ago, when his son told me, Steve, that he actually took over Bus Ford as a teenager, because his father had passed early, so he, he took it over as a youngster and developed that dealership into what it is today. a youngster and, and developed that dealership into what it is today. McHenry County Chairman, I don't know how many years, but he chaired the McHenry County Board, and at the time when he was chair is when the, the Charles Miller Bridge was built. And I, I personally call it the Ed Bus Bridge, just because it happened when he was, when he was a chair. He's been a devoted, you know, husband to Joni, who Joni we lost in, in November of last year. And I, I can't, I don't want to go through all the kids and grandchildren because I don't know all the names, but devoted member at McHenry Country Club for probably his whole adult life. And, and I think, a thing that's probably, I wanted to mention this because, you know, I heard about this over the years, is that he had enough time to, to coach, I know, youth basketball, and I'm not sure if he coached other sports, but he was a youth basketball coach. I want to say for, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, but I, I believe it was for Montini for the, for St. Mary's and St. Pat's. And I know his, his mass, he was a member at St. Mary's. And we'll miss him. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
You know, Alderman Santi, I can probably not know all the details as much as you do, but you can look around town. You can, you know, over the years, that the Bus family was quite involved in the city of McHenry and donated to a lot of things. And maybe what we need to do is direct our administrator to come up with a proclamation for the next meeting to present to the, the Bus family something that, other than just one comment from an Alderman, that the city council, as well as the city of McHenry, appreciated all the things that they did.
Thank you, Alderman Glad.
Any other city council? Yes, Alderwoman Miller?
I just wanted to remind everyone that before we meet again, Shamrock's on the Fox will occur. So, we need to be out there and supporting all of the hard efforts of our staff. Bill, do you want to add anything to that?
I will. Just, I appreciate that. I was going to jump in on the staff reports and neglected to do so. In any case, Friday, this, this will be the year that we have a Friday festivity. So, four to, four to 11 on Friday. I don't think, I think ticket sales will start in that four o'clock range. The taps don't actually open until five o'clock. No, no open container on Friday. No, none of that will be happening. Then Saturday and Sunday will be the same activity. So, Saturday will be, we'll start off with 5K. The Quanis Club puts on the 5K. That's out of East Campus. That starts at eight o'clock, so basically eight to nine. That's, the boats are about in the water around nine o'clock. They'll start dying about 9:30. We'll close down the Pearl Street Bridge, which is always probably the prime viewing spot. We'll close that down at nine o'clock. We'll have, so then we'll start to die, and that'll, that'll go to about noon. Our parade starts at noon. The event grounds down at Miller Point will open up at 11:00. So, 11 to 11:00, 11 a.m. to 11 p.m. On Saturday, again, we'll have the bounce houses for the kids, and we'll have some face painting. I think we have six or seven food trucks this year, so we've increased that. Pray for not having nine-degree weather like last year. That would be helpful. And then on Sunday, we'll open up again at noon. There is a, there's a full band lineup. It's on our, on the website. We actually partner with Natural McHenry County and have, do a website with them. But on Saturday, we're noon until 7:00, and we'll have fireworks once again downtown at 7:00 p.m. It's always, always a hit to kind of wrap things up for the day. But if anybody's looking to volunteer, I do have some spots available. If you want to sell some tickets, sell some tickets or wristband, I'll send out the, the link to the Google Doc to everybody tomorrow. If you, if you are interested or have some availability, would like to do so, you can pick whatever slot you want. Just put your name in there. I'd appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Fireworks Saturday or Sunday night?
Sunday. Fireworks, fireworks will be Sunday.
Sunday. Thank you.
Sunday approximately 7:00 p.m.
Yes. Alderwoman Miller?
Thanks. I just wanted to thank whoever created the new newsletter. Monty, was that you?
I did not design it. It was Nancy, Nicole, and Elizabeth.
Perfect. It was awesome. And just for our viewers online, the newsletter's available on the website, and it has a boatload of information in it. So, thank you, Monty, the new format. Your design team was amazing. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Number 12 and 13 have been removed from the agenda. If there's nothing else, then we will look for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Strack?
So moved.
Seconded by Alderman Santi?
I will, I will second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.